Folks, those in the room and those on Zoom, thank you very much for taking the time to come out and listen to this public hearing and participate in this public hearing. There are a couple of things I just want to do some ground rules, but first and most importantly, I want to thank our town engineer Janice Plaziac and the assistant town engineer Mike Chicharelli, who will be making the bulk of the presentation this evening, so I get the night off somewhat, about the various projects that we would like you to consider weighing in on as we move, determine whether or not we're going to move forward with these projects. I'd also like to thank the sustainable, not sustainable, but the Guilford, what is it, Tim?
Save Streets Task Force.
The Guilford Save Streets Task Force, who has been, which was constituted, I think, five years ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, and diligently worked to try to create pedestrian cycling and driving safety initiatives throughout this town, some of which, some of the initiatives we're actually going to be talking about tonight. So sometimes those kind of studies, those kind of programs, they wind up getting put in a binder and on the shelf, but what we're going to see tonight is the manifestation of potential action from, from some of those, some of those programs that that study and the study found to be important. There are three different projects we're going to talk about tonight. And as I mentioned, Janice or Michael will be making a presentation on each one of those. At the conclusion of each of those presentations, which will be via, I think there's going to be some PowerPoint stuff on the screens that you guys can't, so that's what you're going to need to look at. We will entertain questions and comments on each one of these three projects that we're bringing you to tonight. And don't think that if you make a comment or a question, one question about one of them, or that precludes you from asking questions or making comments on the other ones. We're here for as long as you folks want to be here. We want to hear what you have to say, and we want to try to answer any questions we can. So, any, the board members, okay, I think we're ready to roll. Janice?
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I just, I'm Janice Plaziac, town engineer, and I have Mike Chicharella, who's our assistant town engineer. We've been working on these concept plans, and we have completed a number of sidewalk projects in town. Boston Street project, that was a connectivity grant, DOT. We have the Route 77 sidewalk extension. That was a federally funded program. I forget exactly the program that it was, but that funded that project. We've been doing upgrades to our sidewalk system. We have purchase orders out for State Street sidewalk extension, at least our first phase of extension. And we have concept designs for Hubbard Road with funding in place for that. So we've been doing also infill on Route 1. But we've been working with the Save Streets Task Force to kind of, you know, they did a complete streets plan and working with them to really try and focus on areas of need. And we did, once we completed the Boston Street sidewalks, we realized how fortuitous it was to have those sidewalks in place. We had a lot of compliments, and we applied to the same program in order to extend it to the town line in Madison. So tonight, we're going to present to you three projects. One's Boston Post Road, which is the extension from Boston Street to the town line. And then the next one is going to be North Madison Road, which is, there's already sidewalks in some parts of that area. We're trying to extend them out. And then the third project is Long Hill Road, which is really two concept plans, and we're looking for some feedback in terms of what kind of the preference is before we take anything any further on that project. We do have funding in place for the first project on Boston Post Road, but we do want to hear from the public as well as the Board of Selectmen for their approval to move forward with that project. And I'm going to hand it over to Mike Chicharella, who will go ahead and present the Boston Post Road project.
Before we get started on that, I just wanted to mention, for the past number of years, we've had created three specific documents that kind of created us, created an outline for those projects. We have a Complete Streets Resolution that was adopted in 2020, a Complete Streets Plan that was adopted in 2022, which that was the Save Streets Task Force worked on, and the ADA Transition Plan, which was created by our department and created a schedule of making improvements to existing sidewalks. So we have all three of these documents in place that basically set the stone for future sidewalk projects. All these are also available on our website, too. Just go to the town of Guilford website under the engineering department, if you'd like to take a further look into those. So then I like the three project locations. For reference, the bottom of the screen, the Guilford green. The red area is the Long Hill Road Complete Streets project. That's ranging from Hubbard Road up to New England Road. In green on the top of the screen, that's North Madison Road. That's ranging from Nut Plains Road to Fall Road. And then on the bottom right of the screen is the Boston Post Road Sidewalk Extension project, which will start at Boston Street, continue to the town line, and we'll start with that project. So this project is proposing to extend sidewalks from where they currently end on Boston Street, right across from the Shoreline Diner, and extending them all the way to the East River, which is the town line. Those would be, essentially, they would look very similar to what's out there now on Boston Street. Be a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk, and it would run across the entire south side of Boston Post Road. There's also three existing bus stops in this corridor. So as part of the project, we would be adding bus stop platforms that are connected to the sidewalks for anyone utilizing the public transit system there. As Janice mentioned earlier, we've received a DOT connectivity grant for this project, just over $700,000. Design in-house, so that cost will be covered in-house. Getting cut into plans. Here's a quick project overview. So on the far left side, small, is Boston Street. That's where the existing sidewalks end, right across from the Shoreline Diner, and they extend all the way. Just looking at that more specifically. So the run in front of the two existing hotels, there's a CT Transit bus stop there, so that'll be connected. And all of the sidewalk will be located within the state right-of-way, so there's won't be any impacts to. It'll be crossing each of the driveways with crosswalks and ADA compliant ramps. It'll have, it'll intersect with both ends of Horseshoe Road, so there'll be crosswalk, ADA compliant ramps. There's also another bus stop at that location. There, there is a small retaining wall that we suspect will likely have to be constructed on the left side of that intersection to accommodate and exist some existing conditions that are there. And then continue moving down Boston Post Road to the other leg of Horseshoe and across there, again with crosswalk and ADA compliant ramps. And then from there, it'll continue all the way to the river. The bridge itself at the East River has sidewalk on it, so we'll be tying right into that. Would you suspect that there'd be another wall, retaining wall, that'll have to be constructed in the kind of the southern left portion of the plans there to accommodate some of the grading challenges on the south side of the road? The entire sidewalk, we plan will have a grass, snowshoe, is what we call it, essentially separating roadway from the sidewalk. It'll be both horizontally separated and vertically separated, because there'll be the curving already placed on that side of Boston Post Road. So that'll be continuing all the way to the East River, and that's where the project will terminate. So that kind of gives a quick synopsis of the, this project. So, any questions?
Thank you very much. A couple of points I just want to make. One of them is, this is tying one of our populous neighborhoods to town. I think there was a number on the screen, it was 161 homes in that area, that will now have connectivity, basically, from the East River to the West River. Save for about a 15-foot piece over the creek that we're still working to complete on 146, the last sidewalk. So you think about it for a minute, that, that, that is, that's a pretty significant piece of sidewalk that people can walk across, ride their bicycles on, push strollers or whatever it is, in, in complete safety, that has not, did not exist until this point. So I just wanted to make those couple of points that this, again, I think we're, we were in office, what, for about a month? And we had a petition, we had like four petitions about sidewalks, for two months, thank you.
I just want to add, it, it also connects now Calvin Lee and Adams School. And when you go across the West River, you get to Cox. So we have three schools that are connected.
Thank, thank you, Tim. Tim's a member of this, the task force, so thank you very much for bringing that point up. Okay. The point I was about to make was, within a couple of months of us being in office together, seven years ago, we were presented with petitions. And this was one of the petitions, which is to tie the Sunrise neighborhood to the downtown area. So this, this is really, I think, significant in terms of how we have been able to potentially get this done. But more importantly, we got this done with state, state funding, no tax dollars on this project. So with that, I'll open it up to questions of Michael or Janice. Any questions on the design, the concept, how we got here? Certainly. Just name, name an address for the record, please.
Jeff Griffin, my team, Bruce O'Donnell, George. I think it's great, any place we put sidewalks in the Guilford area.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Name an address.
86 Horseshoe Road. You were talking about a retaining wall. I believe that would land on part of the property that I mow along Route 1, alongside my house. Horseshoe Road going down towards Lower Horseshoe Road. I own, I frontage, the state owns that property, but I do care for it currently. Almost a football field length there, so where would the retaining wall be going and how tall and?
So then it won't be the entire width of that area, so we're quoting, kind of hard to see here, but it's about 125 roughly, retaining wall. There's a type here that's somewhat close to the road. And then there's a pretty much a great steep embankment, as well as an existing wall at this location. So we're really only tying into it, and it would be kind of dying off till before the next driveway. Not sure of the address on that next driveway, but it would be ending prior to that.
Do you, do you bow the one that's over by the intersection of Horseshoe, or, or is it? But there's, there's two.
I do from upper Sunrise where the, the flashing light is. And I go probably three-quarters of the length down to lower Horseshoe. Maybe like 40 feet from my lower neighbor's driveway. That, it's a pretty big distance, and that'll be a lot of sidewalk shovel, so.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be the small section at the, right at the corner there, that's really just to preserve the pillar that's there right now. So it's really right.
Other side?
Yeah, there's going to be just one small little section there. So it's, it's really just to preserve the pillar at that intersection, on the west side of that intersection. And then the other section of wall is in front of number 70 and number 60, Boston Post Road, where there's two feet right now, and the only way we could put in the sidewalk would be to use a retaining wall in that area. So I'm not, I don't think it's in the area that.
Misunderstood, so it's just, yeah, I mean, you know, it's just concern, you know, if there's a stone wall there, there's opportunity for people to sit there, there's been a lot of roof rot, you know. They said, you know.
There's been a lot of people arrested on that corner, let's be honest.
We don't want to entertain a place for people to.
Yeah, and this is, this is all just concept. We don't have any survey yet. Once we get into survey, we'll know better, you know, through extensive walls, and if maybe we could even eliminate them, if possible. It's always best to eliminate walls, because they're just another thing to have to maintain into the future. But right now, we're anticipating a need for the walls in these two locations.
And then, I know there's an area in Guilford, from in front of Whitfield House, over the Amtrak Bridge, down towards the docks, that I believe Park and Rec is or has been plowing and not the neighbors. Is that still going on? And if so, is there any thought in the future for the town to expand that out to some of these new sidewalks that are being put in?
I mean, I could, I could just say, there's no anticipation that we would be expanding the, you know, efforts of Park and Rec to, to snow power, remove our, our town ordinance does put the requirement for snow power, snow removal of sidewalks on the adjacent property owners. Some of the centers, you know, town center areas, I believe, but we're not looking to expand that to our town force. The Boston Street sidewalks that were extended, as well as the Route 77 sidewalks that were extended, are all being plowed, you know, snow removed by the adjacent property owners. And the only location where the town would take that on is where we own the adjacent property.
I have a question.
Certainly. Name an address, please.
Gwen Gunn, 395 Nut Plains Road. We're being widened there, as you know, the whole Nut Plains Road is.
Gwen, can, can you hold off? We're, we're taking these sequentially. We're addressing each project at a time, so we haven't even started talking about the Nut Plains at this point. So we'll, we'll get to your question in a little bit.
Okay.
Anything else on the Boston Street questions?
Kathleen Jones, I'm at 60 Boston Post. Kathleen Jones, 60 Boston Post Road. The hill, the retaining hill right before us, a lot of granite there. Is there, is that a blasting thing that, or are you going to then work with? Typically, what we've been, we've, you know, we're doing a, a project on Nut Plains Road right now. We just, we've been prepped for the State Street one. We, we find that the rock usually can be handled with Oram, as opposed to any blasting. You know, it's typically fractured rock, it's able to be broken up. We might want to do some borings there just to confirm what's there. So if we can avoid tanning walls and use the existing rock, you know, not have to build walls, that would be even better if it is rock. It does add cost for the removal of the rock, but then you don't have to build the wall. So those are some things we'll have to look into further. Okay. And then second to that is the posts that we have in front of our house. Are they things that are going to be, we are just below that? Is that something that is going to be removed? Because they are. Those are, those should be on your property line. So looking at the photo on Google Maps, it looks like the sidewalk would be in front of them. But any, any direct impacts to adjacent properties, you know, once we have a full design and know what those impacts are, we'll be reaching out to folks, you know, to just talk about, you know, things that might be in the way, how we could either avoid them, go around them, or relocate them if need be. But the work is intended to be within the state right-of-way.
Fred Gronstadt, 42, Cornwall Lane. I'm also co-chair of the Guilford Team for Shoreline Greenway Trail. And when I look around town and see people walking, which you see a lot more people walking these days than a few years ago, a lot of times it's groups of people, you know, walking two-by-two, or biking two-by-two, or strollers. And it seems to us that five feet is really not wide enough. We think it could be a minimum of six, if not eight. And wondering, have you considered widening it more than the, I know five feet is what some sidewalks are now, but.
Yeah, we have some sidewalks as narrow as three. There's definitely a number of sections on Boston Post Road that are four. Our standard now is five, and it's state standard as well. It seems to work nicely to stay within the right-of-way and not impact people's properties, yet still provide safe two-way passage for, for travelers on the, on the sidewalk. And I think, you know, I know, I'm one who walks in the center of town a lot, and Whitfield Street, that's, that's typically a five-foot sidewalk. People just have to pass, make room. It seems to work. We also don't want to, you know, create too much impervious surface out there, and stormwater runoff is a concern as well for us. So, you know, you got to balance kind of all the needs. But in this particular case, the program has typically been a five-foot sidewalk on Boston Post. And that's kind of the program we're going to try and stay with. Later project, you'll see we have other ideas, so.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Comments, support? Again?
Crystal Gaudio, 55 South Fair Street. I have two kids that go to Calvin Lee, and we're able to bike from our house all the way to the school on sidewalks. And it's amazing. And we appreciate having sidewalks.
Just a few comments. Joe Petrowski, Valley Shores Drive. I came through the North Madison Road project with the fellow just that just spoke about the widening of the sidewalks. I've been in this town for 45 years. I've seen a lot of projects. From time to time, they end up, oh, we should have done this, or we should have done that. The man's coming forward with what I believe is a rational request. I'll back up the evidence that people are walking in groups, and maybe the sidewalks aren't widened. So I think maybe we should reconsider what our position is on this particular project, because, you know, agenda. Like I say, this area is not part of mine.
General concept that you're talking.
Yeah, I know, but the thing is, I'm just bringing up historical issues. Do something that we realized we should have done a little different.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If, if, we want to talk about all three. Valerie Ferrucci, 1595 Little Meadow Road. If we want to talk about all three, should we wait till the end?
Yeah. How about for my peers up here? Any comments or questions or concerns?
No, it's just the concept, you know, and the work done even in the previous minutes. I for one, very glad that the increase in density is connecting to one such made artery in town.
I was just thinking, in a perfect world, six feet would be good, but I also feel sensitivity to the property owners along the road. And as Janice has said more than once, we're trying to, to use the right-of-way and not get into their property. So I don't know how that five-foot versus six-foot impacts that. So I, I would just keep in mind that end of it.
Never the big issue last, ever.
I'll, I'll lend my voice to support for this project. This is one that I think the community deserves. They're tying together one of the most populous neighborhoods in town, literally to stretch that is unheard of in terms of sidewalks in this community. The safety and access it brings to our communities, I think, well worth it. I think I'd like to have the board vote on whether we forward this project, because we have the grant. We have, we applied for the grant, and we need to accept that grant with the considerations that have been voiced here tonight, as to whether or not we consider something wider. And, and so I would ask if there's a motion for us to forward this particular project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, let me try your minds all in favor. Thank you. Let's move on to North Madison Road.
So North Madison Road includes Guilford Lake School, which already has some sidewalks near it, as well as the lakes themselves, which has a small section of sidewalks adjacent on the north side of the road. This was one of the Save Streets Task Force kind of focus projects early on, and they had some funding that they helped lend towards the development of this concept plan, which they first kind of brought to the community themselves, I believe, and had a number of community meetings. And so we just took that further with some review by consultants, especially a traffic engineer, just to be sure that there were some safety included in some of this as it relates to the intersection at Mophus Road. So looking at the plans, we're starting to the west over by Coventry Way and Nut Plains Road, connecting the Paul Retail there at the corner of Stepstone and Coventry Way, connecting over with some crosswalks running along the south side of the, of the roadway. Almost where you, we currently have a crosswalk now over by Valley Shores. That's being moved slightly, I think, to the west in order to just better align everything, crossing the road there and heading to, on the north side to the east, and then matching up to existing sidewalks that were, I believe, installed as part of a past subdivision years ago. And then those sidewalks continue along those newer home subdivision. On the north side, as we approach the school, we're doing some improvements closer to the school, in front of the school, and then bringing crosswalks to the intersection of Mophus. And we're anticipating that to be a three-way stop installed at, if the sidewalks are, are constructed, to make that a safe, a safe possible crossing, right adjacent to the school. That was one area we had our traffic engineer really look at. The warrants for stop signs, as well as stopping site distances, because there's a curve as you approach heading, heading west on that, on North Madison Road. We wanted to make sure we weren't going to have any problems with people having enough time to stop at those stop signs. And, you know, they felt that while the traffic volumes don't really warrant stop signs, the safety impacts of having the crosswalks at the stop, you know, three-way stop would be favorable and recommended. That will ultimately be up to the police commission to approve that when stopped. Plans have been reviewed with them as well. And then the sidewalks end up going to the south side of North Madison Road. On the north side, we have the Golf Course parking lot, which doesn't really have much land there to build a sidewalk. It would have been pitched on the, the parking lot itself if we were to build on that side. So we went to the south, heading further to the east. We cross at Hickory Road, and then here is where the sidewalk has to kind of go to the curb. Prior to this point, we're including that snow shelf between the curb and the edge of the sidewalk to give a little bit of a buffer from sidewalk from the road. But here, along this edge, we've identified the need to really stay close to the curbing. And then we go back again with a bit of a snow shelf and go around this, this bend in the road. There is some landscaping and trees in this corner, so we're going to have to take a close look at that in terms of those impacts. But again, this, this whole project is intended to be within the town's right-of-way. It then comes back down and then again has to cross again, because we're, we're dealing with, on the south side, or the west side, as it turns now the road, there's some significant embankments to deal with, and we're trying to find better terrain to actually have the sidewalk be on. So again, we're having another mid-block crosswalk. I do want to point out, we have a number of mid-block crosswalks. We're anticipating utilizing RRFBs, which are called particular rapid flashing beacons, which we have one currently in front of Adams School as part of that project. Or preferably, if we have enough within the road, we're looking at possibly doing the center islands, which will also provide a nice traffic calming element to traffic on the road and provide a safer crossing area for, for those who have to do these mid-block crossings. So those two options are on the table. There might be a mix of them depending on what the roadway width can tolerate. But we want to make sure that these mid-block crosswalks are as safe as they possibly can be. So heading. We're now on the nor, on the north or west side, heading towards the lakes. We're now on the north, on the north or west side, heading towards the lakes. And you can see we tie into Lakeside Drive with crosswalk, and then that's where existing sidewalks pick up again. There's sidewalks already in place by the lakes. And we continue down along there, and there's currently a crosswalk. From the association's little parking area and beach on the south side. I think you might be able to see it just to the west of White Birch Road. That crosswalk is not in a very safe location, in my opinion. I've been asked to improve it with ramps and I've said no, because I don't want to encourage people to use it. It's there, unfortunately. And we're working on a solution that we think is better. And the solution would be to actually extend the sidewalks further to the east to take people to a safer location on the road. Then cross again in a more straightaway area where there's sightlines for traffic and pedestrians to safely cross. And that's closer to Fall Road. So that also then will connect. Echo Point Road is already connected in, but it'll connect Fall Road into the sidewalk system. Which, you know, adds in a few more homes a little easier from the neighborhood to the north. So overall, that's the plan. We have. Points. It's approximately two thousand linear feet of additional sidewalk added to an already twelve hundred linear feet of sidewalk. Broken up in those two sections that already exist there. And we have a cost estimate of about. Eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars right now for this project. We don't have any funding source right now, but we do believe we have some sidewalk funds to at least start. I would want to start on this east end to create the safer crossing for the association beach parking lot of the neighborhoods to the north. And then we will be seeking other funding sources if this is go, going forward and then fine tune the plan.
Janice, thank you. So we can stage this in pieces, is what you're saying?
Well, certainly, this first piece makes sense. I mean, there's already sidewalks to the east here. We're just trying to make a better, safer connection to the neighborhoods on both the north and south to that, to the lakes and the amenities that are already there. So this little section here is something I think we can accomplish with our existing funding in place that we have for sidewalks. But the remainder of the project, I would call it, would be probably something we would seek funding for through some, some source.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone have questions?
Yes.
Valerie Ferrucci, one five nine five Little Meadow Road. Thanks to the town departments and Safe Streets for, for all this work. I'm in favor of all of it. So I have to speak again. The only thing I noticed, but Guilford Lakes School on the corner of Mophus. It's actually on Mophus, but close to North Madison. Whenever there's a school event, which happens fairly frequently, I think at all these schools, there's kinds of issues with parking. Cars pull up over that curb onto the grass. I know that on the other side is the golf course. I, I don't think that's a great spot for, for a sidewalk. But I was even thinking, I've actually been thinking before this about there, and then. If you go over the driveway, there's another island that's part of the, that's where the bus turnaround is. People also pull up there for additional parking. What if there were to be pervious pavers? For parking and walking in those two locations?
Well, we could look at that with the Board of Ed. I don't want to do any improvements, but if you see here, I didn't mention, but. Glad you brought us back here. We are extending sidewalks up Mophus, at least to connect to the school entrance off of Mophus. And that's the extent of the sidewalks in that area. With that extension, then people should not be parking there, because it's, it's, it would be blocking a sidewalk if it gets built. In terms of.
It's gonna be a big issue for school events, because even something small like a book fair, I mean, it's all cars lined up there and on the other side. Even for pickup, often, for everyday pickup, there's cars there.
Yeah, I could talk with the Board of Ed and, you know, we'll obviously be coordinating with them. And see if they can do some expansion of their parking. This will not at least connect people over safely to the parking lot at the golf course. If, you know, if it's a night, night event, there's. There's gonna be a crosswalk there. If people are parking that parking lot, there's not a ton of parking there, but there's some parking. So it'll be at least a safer connection. We'll look into that if the, you know, project proceeds.
I have a comment on Zoom.
Who's this?
I'm on Zoom. I can't, all I can see is the map. I can't see any of you. This is Wendy Furness, fourteen Beach Road. I am a property owner on the side of North Madison, right across from the golf course, the eighth hole. So yeah, Beach Road in North Madison. I have concerns that the sidewalk keeps changing sides of the road. And for the kids who are gonna use it to walk to school, that's a lot of crosswalks. It, it seems to make sense to me, even though we would disrupt the golf course parking lot a little bit. And we'd have to grade on some of those embankments to keep the sidewalk a straight line. So that children are not crossing back and forth, because we all know whether there's a crosswalk or a blinking light. Cars are gonna speed, kids are gonna cross. So I would recommend certainly that everything stays on one side. The other thing is, on that curve that you've got pictured up there, are large trees on the property owner's side of the road. And it seems a shame to destroy those. In order not to, I don't know, impinge on the parking lot or, or the landscaping of the golf course. The increased impervious service, surface, the runoff from both the road and the golf course. Come down into those properties right at that curve, because there's a dip, a swale there. So I think that needs to be really carefully looked at, because our wells are right there. And I think those are all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Hi, just from Zoom World as well.
Wait, I've got someone in the room right now. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm John Kill, in Bretton Hills. And. To put it in no uncertain terms, we're gonna make people most profoundly affected. They've got four enormous maple trees. They're gonna have. We have a ton of landscaping on our property. I'm gonna have to move a whole bunch of trees and shrubs in about five minutes. And the other thing is, it was brought up about when you build a sidewalk. Do you tend to tip it a little bit one way or the other? Which way would be typical?
It towards, towards the street. It has a two percent cross slope towards the street.
And another thing is, when you do something like this, do you do any kind of environmental impacts?
Again, these are concept plans, so we don't have detailed survey to identify like all the trees. I'm familiar with the corner and know that there are significant trees and landscaping there. We do identify if there are any wetlands or wetlands within a hundred feet. And if there are, then we do have to go for wetlands approvals as well. Depending on the funding source, we may or may not have to do like a natural diversity database review. Or some other types of shipo reviews, like historic preservation reviews if state funds are included. So it's just, a lot of times it depends on the funding source, but at a minimum, we would have to do any type of wetlands permitting as required.
I just want to point out, you're removing four large oxygen-producing trees and replacing it concrete. Part of which is cement, part of which is aggregate, and the making of that cement, you probably know, is a huge risk. And.
I agree with what Wendy said is that there's just, the crosswalks don't make sense. I mean, it is. And you say that the Guilford.
Well, we also, I do, I do want to point out, we want to also connect the neighborhood to the south. So if, if the sidewalks on the north, then those folks have to cross too. It's, it's, we're not putting sidewalks on both sides of the road, because I think it would be. A lot of impacts. So we're trying to serve all the neighborhoods. And you're always gonna be kind of leaving one out or the other. And then we have the topography and challenges of embankments that are kind of adding to the challenges. So it's not to say that we can't find a way to avoid certain things, which we will be better know once we have survey. But certainly, that's part of the reason why we're here, is to hear what the concerns are, so we can consider those further. But, you know, we looked at this. Consulting engineering firm looked at this. I reviewed it with our police department and some of their commission members. It's not an easy solution here, unfortunately. But we are trying to at least make the connections. And then I, I think if we're able to add in the islands at those crossings. They're gonna be a nice way to add some traffic calming to the road itself as well. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with the, the island crossing that we have down on Lower Whitfield, just, you know, before. Where you get to the town docks and before you turn to the beach. That island really is, it really slows, you know, traffic down. It provides a nice, safer area for people. And it's also kind of nice to look at, you know, as opposed to the flashing beacons, which help alert drivers. But only when it's, you know, there's a pedestrian there who hits the button, is it gonna, you know, do its thing. You know, I would prefer to utilize the islands as much as we can, but until we have survey, we're not sure exactly where we can do them.
How much notice do you think we might get if this goes through?
You'll get notice, well, once we have survey and we identify impacts to properties, particularly trees and landscaping or any other issues. Like that people have. Sometimes people put their fences out in the rideaway and we have to have it moved. We'll reach out to the property owners.
How much are you allowed to go onto our property? I mean, you, you, there's typically gonna be some kind of a band of grass or soil between the sidewalk and street. Is that correct?
Yes, but not in all locations. I did mention there's a couple of locations and it may be, you know, at this curve that it might make sense. To push the sidewalk right to the curb to lessen those impacts on the adjacent property, to avoid those types of, you know, impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask my question now?
One more here and then I'll come to you.
Okay.
Alison Byron Brown. I live at one sixteen Lakeside Drive. And my question was about the islands. That would help calm traffic. That would be great. Speeding on North Madison Road is out of control. I almost got run off the road just yesterday by a truck that was this far. So you're talking about at the intersection, so at the crossroad?
At the mid-block crosswalks, we would consider them there. And if we're not able to put the islands in because of turning movement conflicts or with the road conflicts. Then we would at a minimum do the RRFBs, which are those black flashing beacons that are actuated by the pedestrian. We did meet with the fire department. We had considered even raised crosswalks, you know, like speed tables, they call them. This is a major fire route for the fire department to get to points east. And they felt that it would just impact the response times too much with that many crosswalks. So that we had to back away from that idea and go to some other alternatives.
Right on Lakeside Drive, North Madison Road, is that like a painted little island?
If people get. No, they would be actually constructed islands, similar to like what you see down on Whitfield. I'm not sure we would necessarily landscape them, because there'd be a lot of maintenance, but we would hardscape them so that they're attractive. With, you know, appropriate signage. You have to alert people to an island in the middle of the road. And just, you know, kind of do it like a decorative stamped concrete or something like that. But it's, it's, it's an impingement in the, with the lane and it's an obstacle in the road that tends to make people want to slow down.
Odunk has them too, right?
Odunk has them. They've been kind of, roads have been widened around them, unfortunately, so I don't think they're as effective. But yeah, they do have them.
Coming on North Madison Road. I've spent some time, Janice has spent some time petitioning or talking to DOT about mitigating that speed bowl that is North Madison Road. It's the unfortunate configuration of exit fifty-nine and sixty that has turned that into a feeder route for commuters. And these are people who are on their way to work. They're sometimes late. Have disregard for the fact that these are neighborhoods they're driving through. So we've, we've been working to try to get DOT to start to address the, these intersections, these highway intersections, when there's only half exits. And allegedly, they're looking, they're looking at it statewide, because there's only about a half a dozen on the major intersections. And we happen to be on one of them, and that's what's created that speed bowl on, on North Madison Road. I don't think there's any question about that. So that is something that we're trying a different tactic. And the state, the state, through federal funding, is looking at basically from Branford to the Rhode Island border. For these kinds of challenges and changes to Interstate ninety-five. So, yeah, Gwen, was that you that was looking to speak?
Yes. I think it's great what Safe Streets is doing. And I love the idea of islands. That sounds wonderful. But my question is, have you given up on the idea of making some connectivity between Adams and Guilford Lakes? Because that, I, I love that idea. I was not one of those no pathway people. I would love to have a, it's very dangerous there. We almost hit bikers and walkers all the time.
Right. So as you're aware, we're currently constructing Nut Plains Road from. And that road was the one that originally was proposed to have the pathway, which was kind of vehemently fought. And those funds were actually turned over, turned back and utilized to build seventy-seven sidewalks. But in rebuilding Nut Plains Road, we tried to balance the ability to. Make the consistent roadway width of twenty-six feet, which allows for two eleven-foot lanes and. Two-foot shoulders on either side. And we're gonna have a white painted line. It's not a sidewalk. It's not nearly as safe as a sidewalk, but it's trying to give some space for sharing the road between bikers and walkers and, and the traffic. So.
So even with this increased width, there's no way to have a bicycle lane?
No, it's, it's, it's really just a two-foot shoulder that's being provided on, on both sides of the road in order for people to share the road.
Thank you. I see Carol Wang. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Is it Carol?
It is Carol. And as my brother puts in his sig file, it rhymes with song, not sang. But what I, mine is sort of a general, I'm at six oh five Long Hill Road. And you haven't gotten to me yet, but I'm a little concerned when I, I assume it was Janice who said, well, we don't have the survey yet. And once we have a survey and a detailed plan, we will then talk to the property owners. But it seems to me that at that point, the project has enough momentum that you will simply steamroller the property owners. And possibly offer them some accommodation, but. The, I don't see that we have much, if any, leverage in what happens to our property.
Carol, I think Janice stated earlier that we would come back to a forum just like this, once we have more definitive plans and, and options outlined. For those that will, this, this process will happen again.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Melissa Shaw at eighty-six Russo Drive. I'm a member of the Safe Streets Task Force as well. I just want to point out just a couple of things. First off, the, the task force itself has received a lot of comments about traffic and pedestrian safety in this direct area. So I think, you know, answering to this is a huge public safety concern of people that live in this neighborhood. Things I really love about this is that at the very beginning and the very end of, of these, of this project. You're moving crosswalks to spots that have a better line of sight. I live outside, within the Valley Shores neighborhood. I live outside within the Valley Shores neighborhood, um that's very tight with the down, uh with the curve and also downhill. When you're coming, uh when you're using that crosswalk that's outside of Valley Shores, as is the one on uh by Fall Road, I think that those are great improvements to the project. I do also wanna reiterate just for public record is, you know, I do, I do recognize the impact on the parking. Of the golf course, um uh Janice has mentioned it previously. Um and maybe if the impact of um on the property owners, the adjacent property owners is too great as in. Um removing the trees is a lot more costly as it as it more than expected. You know, moving it back to the other side on the golf course, um maybe there could be other suggestions like. Maybe not having five feet for the sidewalk on the parking lot area, maybe we can reduce that um to three feet. To make room for um the parking, I do agree that we can't lose any more parking spots in the golf course as it is. Whenever there's a um a a nice day out or Monday night men's league, um the parking lot gets spilled over to the um to the school. So, you know, it is super important to keep maintain as many spots as possible at the golf course. But eliminating the the crosswalks, those number of crosswalks mid-block would be really, would be great and also improve the safety.
Thank you, Melissa, uh anyone else?
Bob Power, eighty-nine Valley Shore. As Melissa and others have pointed out, travel speeds on the North Madison Road are impressive. And some in our neighborhood have have said that if we enforce the speed limit there, the town could give up real estate taxes. With the fines that it collected, may or may not be true. But it occurs to me, you explained Janice, why a raised crosswalk in at the end of Valley Shore would not be a good idea. I understand that, I hadn't thought about ten thousand pounds of sloshing water in a, in a fire truck. But could we instead of having smooth asphalt with smooth paint, instead set in. A walkway of cobblestones or bricks or something that would give. A sort of a haptic sound to those who drive over it at great speed. Seems to me that would be an inexpensive approach that would possibly have some effect.
Yeah, I did rumble strips or, you know, rumbling type of uh measures are sometimes used for. Making drivers alert as well as slowing them down. It also creates noise to the neighbors, so I'm not sure that that would be a welcome. Patient in the neighborhoods, some of those zones are rather closer to the road, it's. Just a residential area, um but certainly we could, you know, look at those ideas as well. I felt that the islands were nice and and luckily the fire department was amenable to them because they can still just kinda. Having to stop or slow down to go over anything, um but we'll we'll consider all, you know. Traffic calming options that we can that will be tolerated by the neighborhood.
Do we have numbers, decimal level for various types of calming pavements?
I don't have that, like, yeah, I don't have that in my repertoire right now to review, but it's something we can look at, we're looking at. Other neighborhoods that have speeding problems um and looking at. New type of uh sinusidal um rumble strips, but my understanding is they're mostly used on the, you know. For lane constriction as opposed to traffic calming or slowing down. Some some use of rumble strips in the roadway as opposed to, you know, for lane delineation have been used, but. I think there's a example on Hampden, but it's up in. Lakes or uh there's no residents around, so it's because it's creates a lot of noise when you drive over and it kinda alerts you that, you know. Hit your brakes sort of, you know, um so that's just my, you know. My thoughts on it, we did confer with a traffic engineer on this project, you know, to try and tap into any of those resources they may have that. It's more their specialty than necessarily I may be aware of and, you know, I think that standard is a rectangular rapid. Beacon, flashing beacon is kind of the standard you're gonna see in a lot of places.
Yeah, Valley Shore Drive again. Desperate needed doing something with North Madison Road. Sidewalks be part of the answer. Then on Valley Shores, as I said before, for quite a while, one thing I've noticed is pedestrian traffic in Valley Shores. People are walking. People that walk in there four o'clock in the morning, they got flashing lights in the dark. These people are either coming from Coventry or Guilford Lakes, Valley Shores is a nice place to walk. Compared to everything else that's in town, some of the other ones, we should give these people an easy way to get there. The crosswalks are a nightmare. Everybody could talk about statistics and everything else. And I'm saying that based on one thing, not incidents, but near misses. Interesting enough, they've done a great job up on the Nut Plains. Since they started that project, I've been going to town through Little Meadow. I noticed something very interesting. They don't speed on that like they do. Going up Nut Plains or on State Street for some reason. I'm serious, but yeah, but you're not over. Nut Plains all the time either.
Yeah, I am.
Oh, you you don't see the speeders there?
No, I see it all around me.
That's my observation.
Yeah, any any suggestions you have for signage, certainly go to the um Police Commission, they have authority over any type of traffic controlling signs.
Yes, oh, Joe Min.
Uh I was gonna say that we should probably keep this, or we should move the sidewalks to the other side of the road. On the golf course side of the road, because um the other, the other crosswalk uh where the bridge is, it's already on that side. And um if I'm going, like, I live on this side of the road, on like the golf course side of the road. So I would have to cross here, then go back and cross again to get back to the, to get to the school. So it just seems safer if it's just one straight and you have to go past more driveways if it's on this side. Just seems safer if it's on this side because you're not going past any driveways. Yeah, and um. And when I'm uh also when I'm getting off the bus, like, I see plenty of people like going straight around the bus. Like flying right through it and if there's, and there's like, there's like a long and long line of sight that you can actually like see it and stop. So, but if there's not a good enough, that if there's not as good of a line of sight over there, they're not, they're they're not gonna stop for a pedestrian. And a school bus has a stop sign and end up blinking lights.
Thank you very much for your well-articulated comments.
Can I just comment on what he said? Because we live right there and this crossover you're proposing. Where he's saying you go over and then you go to the uh already crosswalk, the bridge over there. I mean, that is just profoundly dangerous, including people coming around, the sun in their eyes in the morning. And like I said, we live there and to me, that's, if you could pick the most dangerous site to cross, that's it.
Janice, is that the crosswalk you're intending to move farther east?
Yeah, he's talking about this new one that's proposed.
Like the second that, um that crosswalk, if there was, if anyone ever tries to cross where uh Lakes, Lake Drive meets uh North Madison. That's an impossible sightline. Um and also like to point out that those neighborhoods only have a, at most twenty-four houses on the right-hand side of that south side. Uh whereas you're hooking up hundreds of houses who are in the lakes to the toward Lake Drive, middle of the road. I go point, those are hundreds of houses on the side that could hook up easily around the golf course, uh which then is lots safer for. All the young children who are gonna be crossing like the multiple uh people's driveways and then also all of those roads. So there's a crosswalk and each of those roads, which you mentioned, um besides crossing North Madison twice. And so for those roads who are going to be uh hooked up on the south side. Those few houses can cross once way safer than anyone who is connecting to the the lakes, having to cross twice. And all those driveways and all those tiny roads.
Not to add, um if it's on the golf course side, that's also the side of the convenience store, the side of the school. And side of the golf course, so it's just, there's more things over there so that, just like. More stuff that people are trying to get to.
Just an engineering question, just something that was brought up, when you said the sidewalk could go right to the curb. Who's responsible for cleaning the site, you said at the home? What happens if the plow comes, eight hours later the plow comes, just this person up?
We've all experienced that.
Yeah, it's 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 a, it's kind of the catch twenty-two of sidewalks, that's why we prefer to have the snow shelf. It still doesn't guarantee the snowplow, snow isn't gonna make it back up there. The or, you know, the ordinance says, I think it's been twenty-four hours of the completion of a storm, you're supposed to clear your snow. How diligent you wanna be or how many times you wanna go out and do it, it's just not ideal, it's just sometimes we just have those pinch points where we have to bring it to the curb. It's not our preference though. It's also not the preference for someone walking on it to be that close to the road.
We could, we could have a storm in the daytime. Stop at five o'clock. People go out and clear their snow. Well, it works in this rate, this town for years, they'll go out three o'clock in the morning just to clean up again. That's gonna affect on the night side, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean.
And then when the sun comes out, the heat, then they wanna make another pass to get rid of the slush.
I I hear you, I mean, that's just part of, part of what's, you know, the maintenance of a sidewalk.
Homeowners do have twenty-four hours to clear the sidewalk, you know, the state. So, wait, wait until the second pass.
Usually they pass twice, they 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 open the lanes and then they clear to the curb.
Slide where Nut Plains comes really across from the Crowners. Can't tell from that slide and what's going on, but there are people walking on the other side of the street. Be able to walk into Crowners, because right now there's like a, from Crowley, if you're turning right going west. It's like a little grass berm and a stone wall. I don't remember the crosswalk, who's gonna beat that?
Yeah, you can see there's a little section of the sidewalk that extends beyond the crosswalk at Coventry Way that goes right to the driveway for Crowners.
Great idea, living in Valley Shores, I love the Walter Crowners.
Yeah, we we definitely wanna include that little retail, you know, area to the system.
Millie Schmidt, one forty Wildrose Avenue, I'm also on Safe Streets Task Force. Um I was just wondering for this section, um because we're adding the two extra crosswalks versus just staying on that north side. But is, or is it better to stay on the south side because there's so many more houses and neighborhoods on the south side or I just. Was wondering if there were comments on.
I think there's a.
On this layout as well. Or is there an embankment up there?
Yeah, on the north side, there's a big embankment and stone wall that we're trying to not.
This crosswalk at this intersection already exists and we're proposing gating it, um since the crosswalk exists already so.
If you wanna connect Valley Shores obviously to.
Right, no, I was just curious if there's any.
Yeah.
Up on this layout?
Yeah, I I believe on the north side, there's a very large bankman wall.
Sure, there's one other question. Jeff Kirk on nineteen Gal, nineteen versus right, um when Valley Shore comes out, looks like your, the green is uh. Going off of that corner. Is there gonna be a sidewalk on Valley Shores itself so that they can get to that crosswalk, so they have to go across that neighborhood yard?
We'll make sure it connects to the roadway in a safe way.
Anybody else? Owen O'Neil, I live at two thirty-three Stepstone Hill Road, anything I see here is an improvement. Uh I I know we're working up the fire points, but uh I frequently, especially what we did downtown. I I sell, I love walking downtown, I know people who come out of town to come walk to the downtown area, I think it connects our communities. I'm disappointed we were not able to get that whole Nut Plains connecting into Adams, as someone mentioned earlier, but uh of everything I see. It's not an old, yeah. Uh yeah, that's, Carol, your hand is still up, did you wanna say something again?
Yeah, I put my, actually I did, I did put my hand down and then I put it back up again. Uh cuz the discussion about the responsibility for clearing snow. Um I know, for one thing, living on Long Hill, the snowplows come up at a good rate of speed. And they throw the snow a good distance onto our property. And I know how much effort when we've had snow was required to simply clear our driveway. And to then add another fifty feet of sidewalk for which I'm responsible. What, 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 e- either would you can, would the town consider modifying the requirement to clear sidewalks? Or what is the fine for failing to clear a sidewalk, maybe it would just be cheaper for me to let it be uncleared?
Question, a really good question. Um I don't think there's an appetite for uh modifying the uh the the current requirements. Uh because that would significantly impact a huge portion of this town. Uh and secondly, I do not know what the fine is, but uh someone could probably check the town ordinance pretty quickly, but uh. The only question I have is, uh who clears the rest of your driveway, is this just extending? Do you do it yourself or do you have someone do it for you and?
We, we, we do, we do it ourselves by hand. And the snow that is thrown up by the snowplow, the slush that is thrown up by the snowplow is considerably heavier and harder. Than the snow that falls on its own.
Right, uh I see another hand up, is that Sheila, I can't, my eyesight is not quite what it should be.
Yes, Sheila.
Sheila? You're muted, you're muted, the the term of the uh the decade. Sheila, you're still muted. You're still muted, Sheila. All right, well, we'll see if Sheila can figure it out, anyone else want to uh? Sheila, how are we doing here now? Okay. Sorry. If I can't read your name, I can't read your lips either, so.
It's a hundred dollar fine.
It's a hundred dollar fine, there you go.
Okay, well, expect me to fight sidewalks in my neighborhood then. I said, expect me to fight putting a sidewalk in my neighborhood.
All right, uh comments or questions to the board at this point?
I I have a couple actually. When the uh Nut Plains proposal was pending and. There was a lot of opposition, a lot of discussion, I I started paying attention to other places and I started noticing how many. Different places sidewalks, as Janice said, get wired, now we're veer. Literally button hooks around trees, um I think a lot of communities and I know. This community, our engineering folks are very attentive to the impact that things are gonna have and there's any number of solutions. To s- but many of the problems that people have, there could always be that unique circumstance and of course, but it's a particular person, it always feels. Much more acute, but there are ways around many of these problems and it's extremely helpful.
Much more acute, but there are ways around many of these problems and it's extremely helpful for folks to speak up and be heard and I know. Just, you know, helpful questions and comments are always appreciated, will always be taken, so that part's important. And solvable, so you know, once you start to see it, you'll see them everywhere, the straight sidewalk is in the suburbs. Is less usual than than adjustments. In this area, I lived up in that area for a long time and the whole idea of tying in the store neighborhood, the store complex with the schools and the golf course now is fantastic. So I'm really, I think this is a great location, my one question for our engineering folks. The Monbus Road is like really, any offset intersections always make me kinda crazy and Monbus is really odd. I don't know if there's any fix there, you know, the the golf course curb comes out further than the school curb. And it's just a, it's just a quirky intersection, so.
Have to get cleaned up.
That can be fixed more square?
It's gonna be cleaned up as part of, if we add. Yeah, it'll get cleaned up and and be a little straighter with the addition of the crosswalks and the ramps and everything that would have to be added in there.
Thanks, those are my questions and comments.
Just birthday nineteen, so you made a comment for all your work about Austin Post Roads, the number of uh, people that it impacted. Things like three hundred and something. Um, if you add uh, Joker Lakes for the North Madison and Valley Shores, that's over four hundred people, four hundred homes. That's gonna have a bigger impact than what you. So I think it's a great idea, hope it goes forward, everybody votes to approve it to get it done, thank you.
Just one question or one comment, has nothing to do really with this project, but we're talking Valley Shores here. Just in case from Halloween. We are lights off a quarter after seven, cuz we ran out of candy, we went through three hundred and forty pieces. So.
I never brought my kids up there. Cause I knew you closed down at seven. Janice?
There's a Nancy.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yep, Nancy.
Hello, good evening, so I'm Nancy Ruther, R U T H E R, at ninety-two Long Hill Farm. Have we gotten to Long Hill yet? Okay.
So nothing further from my colleagues? If I'm hearing, uh, Janice, if you could just summarize what you think. What portion are you thinking about moving forward because we have the funding? And I wanna weigh that against some of the concerns that have been expressed here and what potentially needs to be done. I think regardless, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna make a motion to move forward, to continue to study these things. And go back to us with more concrete plans for this section, the the piece that you think we can accomplish with the current funding.
Yeah, I I think we should um, really focus on like lake, lakeside drive, there's a little section that for some reason just doesn't get to the road. You know, do that and then do the section uh, from White Birch to Fall Road, um, because they just. Um, and there's already sidewalks there and and that crosswalk, that's not safe. So I definitely wanna be able to proceed with that section and then we can further study what the comments we received here. You know, how we can.
The other portions.
Things are, you know. Try and reduce these mid block crosswalks and that's something that I agree is a challenge, there's a lot of challenges on the north side of the road too, so.
Move that we uh. Yes, this project to a further planning stage.
Long Hill Road is uh, very conceptual and has two options. Long Hill Road has been identified um, as a road that um, should have connection from Adams to the high school to the. And this is, this would be the first phase of multiple phases um, going up Long Hill Road. We already have plans to build a sidewalk on Hubbard Road, so that'll.
Speaking in a male voice and makes the Zoom people impossible.
Yeah, we're addressing that, if somebody, make sure your microphones are off, please. Thanks, sorry about that.
We we will have connectivity from the end of Hubbard at Long Hill all the way to the town center with the completion of the Hubbard Road sidewalk. And so we really wanna see how we can continue bringing uh, connectivity, you know, between all the schools that, you know, the middle schools and the high school. Uh, and Long Hill Road is probably our biggest Speedway road, that's a town road. Uh, cuz it's straight and it's a hill and they just fly. So, uh, and it's also wide, you know, we have a sixty foot right away, um, so we have room to do things. Um, and it's also, quite frankly, needing attention for the road itself, it needs improved drainage in some areas and the pavement condition isn't. Great in some sections, so um, it seemed like a good time, back in two thousand three, it was identified as a uh, pathway. I think, you know, it was a path to do this connection, we've since built some sidewalks. Uh, so we wanted to explore that option here on Long Hill is, is it a sidewalk and bike lanes? Or just a sidewalk, or is it a multi-use path entirely off the road for both bicycles and pedestrians to utilize? And we also wanna try and incorporate some traffic coming onto the road. So the two options we really looked at in cross section, um, the first one being the ten foot wide shared use path. Uh, this would be a paved pathway, we've identified the west side of the road in this section to be the most. Uh, constructible side of the road, uh, primarily the utility pools are on the east side, which are always a challenge. And some uh, more embankments and things like that exist on the east side than we see closely on the west side. Um, so we identified the sidewalk or this ten foot wide shared use path would be on west side. Narrowing the lanes down to eleven foot lanes, um, in the scenario of the ten foot wide shared use path. You know, you're gonna look at having uh. About um, thirty-two to thirty-four feet width of paved surface, that includes the road and the and the the path. Um, so it it's, we're reducing, you know, kind of our impervious surface here too, which is nice. They're showing here a little bit of a shoulder on the east side that may or may not be necessary, so we could get as narrow as thirty-two feet with pavement. Um, the o- the second option we were looking at was, you know, Long Hill's a big biking road too because. Route seventy-seven, even though it's it's designated as a bike route, is insane to drive everybody on a Route seventy-seven, so we do see a lot of bikers on. Long Hill Road, so we looked at, you know, can we accommodate them with the bike lanes, then we have two six foot wide bike lanes, two eleven foot. Travel lanes, um, and then you have the five foot sidewalk on the west side. Um, but that brings your pavement width up to about thirty-nine feet wide of paved surface on your cross section when you, you know, build it out to this extent. So looking at the um, layout of the ten foot wide shared use path. We wanted to see how it kind of laid out on the road and it's starting, you know, with a crosswalk from Hubbard over to the west side of of Long Hill. And then it just heads north and stays in this case all entirely on the west side. And you're gonna have crossings of driveways and, you know, um, and roadways with uh, crosswalks. Um, and. Heads up north and then one of the pieces de resistance, I call it, is this uh, traffic calming um. Uh, roundabout that we've located at the intersection of Flat Meadow. It's it's doable in this scenario because the path stays to the west. We have enough right away there to keep the path to the west and and have, you know, pedestrians not involved in the actual roundabout, it's just the traffic that goes through the roundabout. Was able to review this with our fire department, because it would be mountable interior, interior uh, center of the uh, roundabout. They would just kinda drive right over everything on their way to an emergency, so um, they were, they were okay with this scenario. And uh, I think it would provide a nice safe intersection uh, for this intersection and will slow, slow folks down to to get through it as well. Um, and keep the pedestrian, you know, the pedestrian and bike traffic well off the road and out of it. And then the other thing we're bringing into this, into both plans is, um, you know, and head north. I ended up. Yeah. Yeah, that's right, going up to the north, um, we would get to New England Road and part of what we wanna do at New England Road with both scenarios. Is to try and narrow down that intersection and tee it up a little more, so that right now kinda people just, you know. Fly right through on their right-hand turns, barely stop and um, we have, we have quite a few accidents there and. We did this as a, as part of the Safe Streets um, Task Force, this was one of the um. Demonstration projects was to narrow down this, this intersection with temporary cones and stuff and to see how. Traffic behaved and we saw a reduction in speeds that are, um, you know, adherence to the stop sign and all that. So we think this would be a good opportunity to also, you know, build that into the project. Uh, so this would be the ten foot wide um, multi-use path. With regard to, um, we wouldn't call this a sidewalk, so there's the possibility, and this is up for discussion and future decisions possibly. Is that, you know, does this need to be shoveled, it seems like it would be a lot to ask an adjacent property owner to shovel ten feet wide of a sidewalk. And if you're calling it a multi-use path, or if the town feels it does need to be cleared. In this scenario, maybe they would wanna assign resources, we're gonna call it a different thing than a sidewalk, so it's not gonna fall under your typical. Sidewalk ordinance requirements, but it has to be, yet to be determined what we need to, you know. Set the parameters and requirements for something called a shared use path or, you know, something, cuz we could end up having these in other parts. Um, so I just wanted to point that out, um, the next one. This is a a close-up of that roundabout, I just wanted to, you know, kinda focus in, they had a close-up of it and it really, you know. Keeps traffic moving, the other nice thing that I like about this, cuz I I do live in this area and I do walk through here at times. And crossing from Long Hill onto um, Flat Meadow is dangerous. There's, it's very dangerous, there's, there's, it's hard to see, um, and cars come flying around. So this provides a nice, safe location for people to make that crossing uh, north of these, this intersection. And then our next option is um, the five foot sidewalk with two six foot wide bike lanes on both directions. And again, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna, not at this high level, it doesn't look too much different, I think the biggest option is the cross section to show you the difference. But again, we're gonna have the crosswalk from Hubbard Road to the sidewalk, which would be the five foot wide sidewalk. That'll run all again on the west side of the road, but now you're gonna have bike lanes established on both sides of um, the road. And so you can see um, that there are cro- you know, crossings at like Apple Tree and Russet Drive. For both the bike um, on Russet Drive and the sidewalk and on the other side on Apple Tree, it's just for the the bike lane. This continues forward, we do have a couple of houses that are rather close to the right away line, so there, there's a couple pinch points that are. Challenging, but still to be determined how we could it all work. And then the one disappointment in my mind is we don't get to do the roundabout with this scenario. Because we have to accommodate the bike lanes uh, on the road. And the sidewalk, there's just not enough room to create a roundabout that you're bringing the bikes and the pedestrians through and around. So that's where I feel like this plan uh, also falls a little short, but that's my opinion. And then we, you know, head north and we get up to um, the intersection of New England Road. And still, you know, do the realignment of New England Road to kinda uh, better control that intersection. So those are really the two scenarios that we've been looking at. We don't have any estimates of cost, cuz we haven't really find, you know, we didn't go any further, cuz we really wanted to. Kinda get a feel for what's, you know, what's the thinking here, and keep in mind, we're looking at bringing this, you know, in phases further north along Long Hill Road. At least to Baldwin Middle School. I hit all the highlights I wanted on this one. Um, we do think the eleven foot lanes overall will will provide a little bit of traffic calming for the road. And obviously having the other uses of the pedestrians and bicyclists, whether they're on the road or adjacent to the road adds to that. I think in some cases, we're gonna see the, I'm like, uh, if we were to go with the. The trail, the ten foot trail, we would probably see a reduction in the width of the, you know, paved surface. Likely have to see reconstruction of the road to accommodate, you know, all this. So you're gonna use some parts of what's already pavement, you know, create curbing and that in your trail or your sidewalk.
Thank you, Janice. Uh, questions?
Seems very broad street, um, I love the shared path, I think it is, um, there's so many great components in it. And one of them is the fact that the shared path gets cyclists off the roadway. And um, the problem with the other one is that they're unprotected, so there is a, there's a, you know, there's a designated lane. But it's not as safe for cyclists as being um, on the shared path, the roundabout is. Just we need so many more of them. And, you know, the, as we did with the uh, project showing. Uh, reconfiguration of New England Road, that's gonna make it a lot safer, so I think that if we were to go with this first plan. We would go a long way toward making Long Hill a lot safer for all users.
Yeah, I agree, I'm Lucas Caffey, I live on Highwoods Drive right off of Long Hill, I'm a student at Guilford High School and um. I'm a biker, a walker, I'm on the cross-country team and my brother's on the soccer team and I think option one is also a perfect idea. Anyone walking to Long Hill Field after school, it's really needed and the roundabout is a perfect way to control traffic, a lot of us. A lot of students are crazy speeders in that area, um, I think the shared path is a perfect option, um, yeah, I agree.
What is the construction material that is gonna be used for that share? Cuz if it is an academy, bicycle board, we're not gonna use.
No, it would be, it would be a paved surface, li- likely asphalt is, you know, the most reasonable cost effective. But we will get all options, but we would want it to be a hard surface.
We're gonna need any traffic lights or headlights at nighttime, people walking in summer, they'll walk the paths.
Yes, that's important, it's important to have illumination at crosswalks so that the, um, you know, pedestrians are visible to.
Billy Schmidt, one forty Wildrose Avenue, I just wanted to talk about um, some work that Jim Bustman had been doing before he fell ill. Um, he was working with the League of American Isol- Isolists about certification for Guilford. Whether you're platinum, silver, gold, or whatever, and one thing he found out was that um. One of the things that you put in your package is how many uh, bike lanes or bike, bikeable, safe bikeways you have in your town. And they're no longer counting bike lanes, uh, if they're unprotected. So to get certification, to get those higher levels, you need to have a protected bike lane or a multi-use like shared path. So I thought that that, so I really do like option one a lot better, that speed limit, I think it's thirty-five miles per hour. So people are going forty, forty-five, best case scenario. And in the summer especially, when we're driving up to the high school for all of our kids events, I see so many high schoolers biking. From the central part of town up to the high school and to get the kids and people off that road better. Seems like a win-win. And to get the kids and people off that road better seems like a win-win.
Uh, yeah, I'm also a fan of the ten-foot shared path. And I don't know if this is more PD or you guys, but, you know, you do mention a squaring off, uh, at New England Road. Um, as someone who does drive to the high school Monday through Friday, um, I, I don't know what the solution is, but it is an issue. It's a big issue that I, I don't, and I don't know what the answer is, but, um, I don't know if that squaring off is really going to make a big impact. So just something to think, I feel like it needs to be looked at.
In the back. Uh, I'm Alan Carpenter, resident, uh, Brooklyn. Uh, I'm not only here because I live near Long Hill Drive, but also I'm, I'm always doing the changes. Um, I think it's pretty important for students to have this option one. As it's very beneficial for us, for students that, you know, drive, uh, walk by or, um, get to school. As she mentioned, I also, I drive to school. I don't walk or bike. But I've seen, um, at least two kids waiting and, uh, for cars to stop for them to go by crosspaths to get to the high school. Um, as she mentioned, there's so much traffic for roundabout, all the way to, from Long Hill to the entrance of the high school. Um, I think it's very important for, you know, this project to be, um, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about moving on the road. The high school, is that office buildings still when used, was it, uh, business offices?
Uh, that will, that will continue to be in use. They're consolidating their offices in the old science wing.
Okay, yeah.
Um, folks moving out of there, but it's gonna be used for storage and, uh, and be opposed to the business office. So that will stay there.
Well, the reason I brought that up is they're talking about that intersection, Long Hill with New England. Years ago, I thought if that building was ever taken out of service, could have another cut through from the high school onto Long Hill Road. So even the bus travel, yeah, you're south.
My, I'm Mary Sinema, last time, line three-one, Long Hill Road. So I love both of the ideas. I was a little bit more for idea two because of safety of pedestrians. Right now, I don't know how safe the pedestrians are if we just go with one, uh, section for both of them. Are there gonna be like, are there plans for markings so that the pedestrians and the bikers are slightly like separated? Because as everybody said, there is a large traffic going on, both like school kids and also bikers. And it's gonna, it might become dangerous. Is in the, will the bikers hit the pedestrians? Is there a way to separate them a little bit? But I do like option one. Obviously, it looks better. Um, so yeah, I was just bringing this up. Maybe it's something you wanna think about. That and also while we drive on Long Hill, uh, Road, in particular in front of the orchard, it's like pitch dark. And, uh, I know this, this is gonna help, but is there a way we could put a light or two around that area? Because it's just like, you don't see anything if you drive there, so.
I guess we could look at that.
So the ten-foot wide is, is a standard, um, nationally used for shared paths. Um, so it's, it's typically, you know, wide enough for people to be able to share the, the pathway, you know? Um, I don't foresee needing to do pavement markings on it, but if it's, you know, an issue, it's something we could consider. Um, but I think, you know, you go to most of your greenway trails or, you know, the Farmington River Canal Trail, those are typically ten feet wide. Um, some, in some places it's certainly wider, but, you know, you're, you're, you wanna have a ten-foot wide section.
Um, I agree. I think ten feet is plenty wide, especially in the section from Hubbard to like the lower end of Long Hill Road. Um, especially because it creates a way for bikers, especially high school students, to get from the high school to Hubbard Road and then to go onto Durham Road to the green. Um, I think ten feet is plenty of width for it, because as of right now, I think protection by the high schools, it might even be less than four feet. Yeah, yeah, it's tiny. And people are still able to cross there, like, I might down there when like someone's walking their dog and it's fine. It's a little bit close, but you know, ten feet's plenty of room. Um, I think it's more than safe and it's a great solution. And then also going off what you mentioned about Bishop's Orchards. Um, I think the roundabout is a good solution to that, where you could even put a light there. And then also, um, as perspective of somebody, I put out the sound, the signs on Long Hill Road for Bishop's Orchards in the summer. Um, and I think the roundabout with option one is the perfect solution to that area.
Uh, let me ask a question. I know there are a couple of very serious bikers in this room. How do you guys, what, what options do you guys look at, uh, to work? And Drew, I know you, I know you ride down that.
Yeah, Drew Burn, Drywood Drive, and, and avid cyclist. Um, I, I think what you're gonna find is a lot of people that use, you have kind of two segments. You have the high schoolers and the children. That's great for that. But you're gonna have a lot of cyclists that are serious cyclists, and they're just gonna maintain on the road and continue on. They're not gonna deviate onto a path for a couple of miles. They're just gonna continue through, which is fine. I mean, the objective of that pathway, I think, is for the community to utilize and be safe.
Uh, all the way in the back, and I'll come back to.
Five fifty-nine Long Hill. Are you considering comming, islands along that, or no?
Um, the, the traffic calming we're including is narrowing the, the, the way, you know, the width of the pavement to the twenty, you know, twenty-two feet wide for the lanes, to eleven-foot lanes. And then the roundabout at that one intersection, um, again, it's, it's a, it's a fire route. It's, it is a main collector road in town. Um, I don't know that we can do too much more. Uh, we originally did have, you know, speed table crosswalk at Hubbard, and that was nixed by the fire department. So we could try and maybe revisit some of those things and look at other ways potentially to add some more traffic calming.
Just because of the intersection of Flag Marsh and Long Hill, they have to pull so far out to see both ways.
Yeah, that, that one is, is, is a challenge with the grade change, um, at that intersection. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take that into consideration.
Good, Doug.
I, I've done a lot of biking recently. Um, I, I've ridden the bike past the vineyard, um, and other places. Um, I would just say, I mean, I like option one. I think, I, I think it'll look nice. I think if it's made well, if it's maintained well, a lot of bikers will come off of Long Hill Road and ride it. So I just think it depends how well it's maintained. If it starts getting ripply and bumpy, those avid bike riders are gonna come off of it, so. Um, but I, I do think it's a good plan. I, I think it's a safe plan. It, it's a helpful, an area that is very busy with, you know, people trying to travel to school.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, Nancy? Uh, Zoom, Nancy? Still muted.
Sorry, I was waiting, do another work. Um, so, yeah, I like, now that I understand it, that the path is the narrower. Um, I think that's the way to go, especially if it keeps the roundabout, because slowing down the traffic and finding ways to cross Long Hill Road. Um, and I'm also a biker, a bicyclist, and I think the, for my level of bicycling, not being on the road would be much better. So, I mean, because as I understand it now, option two, it would be bike lanes on Long Hill Road, not in a walking path. Is that correct?
Right, but it would be, um, bike lanes on the road next to the travel lanes and then a sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, definitely, because even if it slows down somewhat with the Flat Meadow Roundabout, um, it's a long straight stretch, you know, and they're gonna go fast, so it'll be better. Um, but yeah, and I have, I've been in Greenville recently, Greenville, South Carolina recently on a, they've got a, a bike pedestrian path from the center of town out to some place. It's like a five-mile path, and it's the width you're talking about, and people get along just fine. And you've got babies and elders, and you've got wheelchairs and bicycles, and they get along. So I'm, I'm not worried about people, bicycles bumping people off, frankly. So I, I love the idea and I wish we could do it this spring, frankly.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, Carol, your hand is up again? Carol?
Yes, it is. Uh, be, because my ear was caught by Janice's comment about, uh, the condition of the pavement. And I've lived here on Long Hill long enough to have seen the reworking of Flag Marsh, which, when we first moved here, the pavement was really not in very good condition, and the curves were fairly extreme. And I believe it was Janice's predecessor who made a decision to smooth the curves. And I can tell you that that had an anti-calming effect on the traffic. That whereas previously, people were content to toddle along at twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. Now I frequently see people zipping along at probably thirty-five miles an hour. So I wouldn't get too excited about pavement improvements, as long as we're not creating potholes that are, uh, actually going to damage people's cars. And I would also say that I like the sound of the ten-foot wide, that I like option one. And the next time I'm down in that neighborhood, I will try to take a picture of the, um, multi-use lane that's down by New Haven Hospital, because they do have some markings on the pavement, sort of indicating that I think, and I think it indicates that bicycles should yield to pedestrians. And hopefully paint is sufficiently inexpensive that adding that would not be a big deal.
Carol, Nancy, you got your hand back up?
Yeah, can I, just one thing on, um, since I live at Long Hill Farm and our exit onto Long Hill is opposite Highlands. We are right below at two-thirty. People say at two-thirty PM and seven-thirty AM, they don't go, they don't try to do their errands at that time of day. Because to get out onto the road with the kids coming down the hill at two-thirty, uh, pretty much you, you put your, you know, it's tricky. Let's just put it that way. So I'm all for slowing it down, and if they can do something at the New England Road corner to make them actually stop before they turn. Um, much less the people coming all the way down Long Hill, who have a nice long stretch, um, to get up to fifty miles an hour before they come across our exit. Um, yeah, I think from the new, from the Long Hill Farm community, it would be, all of this would be very good news.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm Simon fifty-seven Spencer Avenue, Guilford. I'm also an older biker. So I just wanna say it's wonderful and exciting that you're going to think of having the very first multi-use path in Guilford. That would be really wonderful for everybody.
In the back.
Hi, Don Merritt, five fifty-nine Long Hill. Would there be curbing? Because there's no curbing now on most of Long Hill. There'd be on the edges of the road. Thank you.
That's a yes.
Yeah, and that, that brings into the fact that there's some drainage work that needs to be done. In a lot of areas, the road, you know, the water just sheds off the road. So we'd have to make sure we have adequate drainage with the addition of curves.
So then define the entrance into the country tavern. I mean, that we're gonna.
They have, their parking is, it's, it's a old, you know, historic use there. It's not a laid-out parking lot where we could just create one driveway and then people could still park and get in and out of there safely. They just pull in a park. So the way we have it, I think, is just painted across there. Yeah, the way we have it here, you can see it's just like a, it across the whole. It would be a defined area that's paved.
What else?
A question. Sure. We're talking about going all the way up to Falls, option one or two. Most of the conversation tonight has shed about the lower part of Long Hill Road up to New England Road. So it's quite a distance from that point of the fall. Um, all right, have you thought about other parts of town where we might get more bang for the sidewalk look?
Well, we would definitely do this in stages. So the, we've identified this as the, you know, like a priority need location. But the idea would be in the future, you know, to bring it up to Baldwin, because that was always the thought. But it's not to say that we won't do something in other parts of town before we do all of Long Hill Road. Uh, I think we all agree, like, the, the southern part is probably the most heated one. Uh, because at least it connects, you know, Adams to the high school, and it's a, you know, a pretty busy area already. And we're, we're close enough to the center of town that it makes that connection easy. But it's not to say that we won't continue to march up, but still do other things in other locations. I, I don't want to say that that trumps anything else in town. Yeah, I don't wanna say Long Hill's it, and we're not doing anything in any other parts of town. Yeah. Yeah.
So much of this is gonna depend on fund.
Funding.
One of the, one of the good parts is that road is a feeder road, uh, as determined by the state and county. Which means it's eligible for what's known as lots of funding, uh, local, uh, transportation improvement funding, uh, which is a streamlined access to federal money, uh, through, through the, uh, State Department of Transportation. Uh, those monies are allocated, uh, via the, uh, respective council of governments throughout the, uh, throughout the state. There are about nine of those, I think, eight or nine of those. And we have, uh, we've received funding for several projects through that very same process. Uh, most recently, the one that is being done on that Plains Road is, uh, is funded through that program. Uh, we only have to cover the engineering costs, uh, because they cover the construction costs on it. So, uh, those would be, that, that would be the anticipated funding vehicle for this, some of it. Uh, because the pathway may be, uh, be more than they're willing to pay for.
Well, I think, I think if we looked at Long Hill in its entirety, at least the section, you know, from, uh, Fall one down. I mean, we were, we sat in on, you know, the infrastructure bill. That, that infrastructure bill is for funding for many years. It's not all spent yet. And if it stays in place, um, you know, this might be an opportunity to create a huge project. We can get a win out of a reconstructed Long Hill Road and this whole thing. I mean, I'm thinking big here and I'm saying we're there, but it's, 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 you know, if we wanted, and you have to have a big project to go for funding through the infrastructure. So, you know, those are, those are opportunities that if we have a defined project and we, if we nail it down to what we want here and just say we would continue it, you know, up, we could say, let's go for the money if there's an opportunity to do that. Otherwise, we're gonna have a piece of money.
Kim Brockett, uh, Flag Marsh Road. I just want to voice my, um, huge agreement with this. Um, last summer, I walked to the fairgrounds of Farmers Market almost every Thursday from Flag Marsh Road. And the worst part of the trip was between Flag Marsh and Hubbard. There's, there's no shoulder to get off the road. I also walk the block. Nearly every morning, I walk the block from Flag Marsh School Side, High School, back down to Flag Marsh. And the worst part is Long Hill Road. I, I appreciate both the north and the south portion, but to get, to get from Flag Marsh to the fairgrounds, Long Hill was the only place, Long Hill was the only place without sidewalks. Obviously Hubbard, but it's much more protected. But once you hit Route seventy-seven, you're on sidewalks all the way down to Lover's Lane. How much more can you get to be able to walk to the Farmers Market and back three and a half miles each way?
Uh, Janice mentioned earlier that we have, uh, funds, funds for the, uh, continuation along Hubbard to get over to Long Hill. That's a project, that's a project that will be completed. So even Hubbard will be safe.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, would our project be considered, um, or in the eyes of the people who hand out money better? Because it's a complete street project. Are they looking for that?
Oh, yeah.
Sort of, that's a door opener. Uh, without that, you're not gonna get a lot of.
Yeah, we'll get the, yeah.
So thank you very much for participating in that task force and getting that report out. You guys did a tremendous job. Really did. Anybody else? My colleagues? Well, I don't think we need to take any action on this, other than, uh, direct Janice to continue along the path that she's going up. Uh, and, uh, start to develop, uh, the overall scheme, uh.
Should we focus on the ten-foot path?
Uh, I'm hear, I'm hearing it, uh.
Because I don't wanna take the plans any for, you know, we're gonna invest, uh, expanding the plans further.
I'll tell you what, let's, uh, is there a motion to move forward with the ten-foot plan? Further comments, questions? Let me try your minds, all right?
Hi.
Let's go.
All right, thanks.
Any final comments or, uh, questions? Here, no, thank you very much for all coming up and participating. This has been one of the. I think it all comes in a budget meeting.